Alright, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the assessor for roll call.
Larry Stein, present.
Which Freeman County Treasurer, and I'm here.
Brian Munn.
Jason Wolf.
For us to treat.
Rick Warren.
Jim Anderson for Sheriff Tommy Johnson.
Under Sheriff, would you lead us in the pledge? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October sixteen and twenty-nine?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any individual consideration on the consent docket?
Commissioner Davidson, thank you, sir.
If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, our monthly report, Albert. Good morning. If you'll turn to page two on your handout there. Uh, this is the, uh, uh, general fund budget that was, uh, recently passed at the September supplement. So total budget of one hundred and forty-two million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, and a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then the next page is the general fund reserve. Uh, currently have a balance of nine million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, five oh nine and thirty cents. There's nothing pending that I know of. That'll be funded out of general reserve at the moment. And then if you'll turn to page four, which is the general fund budget analysis. Uh, have an ending cash balance for, um, uh, fourteen million, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then the page five, which is the general fund comparison for, uh, month of October compared to last October. As you can see, uh, we're up two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars there. Uh, before I go any further, any questions on this page? No? Okay. And then, uh, page six, which is the employee benefits. Uh, ended with the cash balance of two million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, five oh eight dollars there. Any questions on this page? Nope, okay. And then the next page, which is the employee benefits comparison. Uh, had any balance of October for two million, five forty-five, five oh eight. And then this time October last year, we had a balance of one million, six thirty, five hundred and forty-seven, which were up, uh, nine hundred and nine thousand, five sixty-five compared to last year. Any questions on this one? And then the final last page, uh, is the capital projects detail page here. Um, the copper projects have been revamped. So as you can see compared to, previously, the list is a whole lot shorter just to encapsulate what we currently have for capital projects. Um, currently, the unallocated funds is four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-six, ninety-nine. And that leaves you with an ending balance of six million, eight fifty-one, seven oh seven, fifty-six. Now later on, on the agenda, you'll have a transfer to move two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, um, into the unallocated. So if that's approved, uh, your unallocated balance will be six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-six, ninety-nine, and a grand total of seven million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven oh seven, fifty-six. And then on the, uh, it's not on here, but the prescription in meds, uh, that'll, John will present that side of it. So other than that, that's all I have for you for a quick recap of the monthly financial. Any questions?
Do we need to add this? Okay, is there a motion to receive this, what was not originally attached?
Short motion, motion to receive the attachment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there are no questions of Albert, is there a motion? Or is there a motion needed? No motion needed. Good. Alright, Mr. Wilkerson.
Good morning. Um, this report details claims through the end of October versus the same period last fiscal year. Um, for medical, if you remember, July of two thousand twenty-four, UMR took over and they just started paying claims that were incurred in July. So there's some lag time. This number will catch up, I think, um, during the fiscal year and even out more. But we're up about twenty-five percent, one point eight million in medical. Um, and it's just solely to the fact that UMR started paying claims the prior fiscal year in July. Um, prescriptions are down two percent. Overall, we're up fifteen percent. But if you net it out, you know, I take the two biggest expenses and our two biggest revenues, stop loss and rebates. We received a lot more rebates because of the pharmacy. So we're net about two percent, which is well within budget. That's all I have unless there are any questions.
John, do you have any numbers on the number of people that have gone to the county pharmacy instead of having to go through the typical pharmacy?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, as a reminder, we started last February for the county pharmacy. In February, February, we had nine hundred and forty scripts run through for a grand total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Fast forward to October, um, this last month, we had fifteen hundred and thirty-one scripts go through to a tune of four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in one month. So county pharmacy is operating well. It's really helping our bottom line, as you can see on this report. Um, so, and they're, and they're continuing to market it as well to those people who haven't used it. So every quarter, if you haven't used the pharmacy, they'll get an update in the mail, asking them to, to utilize the pharmacy.
Thank you. No questions? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Cody.
B and T has no changes to watch lists this month.
That's easy enough.
Short and sweet.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kimery, I know you and Chairman Holman are here, either one.
Well, good morning, everyone. Uh, just a quick update, myself and the CFO will give you this update. Uh, current employees are three forty. That's up just a little bit from last month. We've hired a, a couple more folks. Additional staff is eleven from our total medical contract that, uh, we have in place to, uh, help out with our medical folks. Uh, the VHS, uh, contract that does our safety checks for us. Uh, we currently have thirty-three of those on staff. Our employee resignations and terminations for November so far is, is four. Uh, once again, we are asking for a, uh, pay increase for current staff. Uh, the amount is the same that, uh, was, has been briefed before. The starting pay we'd like to get for detention officers is right around fifty thousand dollars, uh, a year. Uh, all other, uh, folks in the building will receive anywhere from twenty-seven point five and fourteen point five percent pay raise. Total cost of about three point four million. Uh, it's probably noteworthy, uh, to, uh, state here that our clerk one right now will qualify for food stamps. Our clerk two position that has a family of three also qualifies for food stamps. Next slide. We'd also like to put this alternate, uh, alternative, uh, pay increase that would just focus on our detention officers only so that we can, uh, really start focusing on retention because that is a significant problem in keeping our people there. Uh, this would only be a total cost of one point seven per year. Obviously, if we did that, started in January, that'd only be half of that for the fiscal year. Uh, and again, uh, requesting a COLA that is, uh, comparable to what other county employees get. Uh, there was a question about the funding for inmate transportation. We thought it would be noteworthy to put in here. We had, uh, existing budgeted funds for the following two vehicles. We also use the funds that we had from the sale of the old transportation bus, which was twenty-seven thousand. And we had one insurance claim on a vehicle that was involved in an accident that was nineteen thousand. We used those monies along with the budgeted funds and then the Arnold Family Foundation donated for the third vehicle. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our CFO.
Morning. I'm Stevie Hampton. I've been at OCDC for right out of month now, so glad to be here. Um, I'm just going to do a quick overview of our October expenses. Um, our total expenses were less than budgeted. Um, by one hundred, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, some notable, uh, variances are salaries, wages, and benefits. Those, those were lower than were budgeted by a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Um, however, due to personnel shortages, we were required to, um, outsource professional services, um, which you'll notice in that, um, that third bullet, um, professional service other fees were above budget by a hundred and sixty-three, eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, also, our legal fees were higher than usual or higher than budgeted, sorry. Uh, and those were for fees, um, to retain outside counsel to file as a case. Okay, on our revenue, um, our rev, total income in October was less than we budgeted by twelve thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Some notable variances are the commissary. Um, its revenue was above the budget by forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. And that was due to a, uh, partial guaranteed commissions payment of fifty thousand dollars for the last fiscal year. Uh, the contract boarding with the city, um, our actual revenue was nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars instead of the one hundred thousand dollars budgeted. Um, our contract negotiations on, uh, November seventeenth, um, our, our offer was rejected. Um, so we are recommending a vote of the trust board in December to try to help us with that. Um, the last one is, um, fees and reimbursements. Oh, I'm sorry, there are two more. Um, detainee, um, prescriptions and off-site medical care, those were lower than budgeted. Uh, we only paid the twenty-eight thousand dollar pharmacy bill. We had held the heritage invoice um, until it could be properly reviewed. So that's why those, and so in November, you'll see two payments for heritage.
Question for you.
Sure.
On the contract boarding with the city.
Yes.
What's their major concerns? Why are they not cooperating?
They are stuck on one number and that's a hundred and sixty-six dollars as opposed to the one ninety-two. And they just said that's their, that's their final number, final offer, so.
And just to clarify, the one sixty-six, excuse me, one sixty-six is what they want to pay and the one ninety-two is what our MGT audit says it costs us for the first day, correct?
Yes, sir.
So where are they going to start putting their inmates?
It's a good question.
Further questions?
Better start making phone calls.
Bed and breakfasts, perhaps? Uh, you mentioned your new hires. What are those positions?
Uh.
Are they filling in for your staff shortages?
The, the, the eleven, like on the additional staff?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, those, well, thirty-three of them are VHS. That's our contracting, uh, folks that we use to do the site checks because we can't hire enough people to, to obviously do those. And then eleven is to supplement the, the medical upstairs. Uh, we're, we need about, uh, seventy and we were operating at about forty-two, forty-three. So we've got eleven additional folks. We have some in the pipeline, uh, that we're going to hire directly. So our numbers are getting a little bit better. For our medical, we're able to operate in a little bit better position than we were in the last couple of months. So that's getting better.
And your staff number, I know you gave us a report and I know you graduated in academy. So where are we? Did we net ahead or?
Oh, no. No, we, we're not ever going to net ahead. Uh, we're probably sixty to seventy officers down.
But we didn't close on that gap at all with this new academy?
Well, we're, we're averaging ten to twelve people that were losing a month and we're only graduating twelve, thirteen, fourteen at a time. We did, we had academy that was scheduled to start in February coming up. I've already pushed that up to January the fifth so that we can get as many people as we can in here to start.
How many people have signed up in January the fifth?
Uh, I think we have about eleven right now. So I'm hoping to get at least twenty-five to start with and we'll hopefully graduate somewhere around fifteen, sixteen, hopefully.
On the information from Mr. Opgram this morning is, it says residence six hundred and seventy-one total, ICE eighty-two, and then it says a hundred and ten municipal holds for OCPD. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that means that we have a hundred and ten inmates from Oklahoma City.
Yeah, but those are not per city charges. Those are other charges.
You stand. But they were brought to us by Oklahoma City.
Yes, yes, sir.
And they would be paying, they would be paying us an amount of money, one ninety-seven? Is that what we're asking for?
Uh, well, if they're go past the second day, it drops down to sixty-six dollar or sixty-two dollars.
Which I can't get a hotel room at Regal Eight Four, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I don't get fed or security or anything else.
Yes, sir.
Medical.
Yes, sir.
Further questions? Alright, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Um, this is just a quick update that our ACF, um, FY twenty-four is completed and submitted over to Moody's. Uh, we are still waiting for their response. Um, I expect, um, and pray, but I expect that it will be positive, um, especially since we just got a rating update not that long ago with the GeoBond. So we're in a really, really great place. Um, attached is the copy of the ACF and I also emailed it to each office so everybody has a copy of it. Um, but I'm incredibly proud of, um, our team. I know that everybody in the county has been a great partner. Um, but our team, especially Albert and Brooke and Amber, um, and many others spent nights and weekends helping us get caught up, um, along with some of our partnerships with EY and Crawford, um, and the auditor's office. I mean, everybody really helped us, um, not only get caught up and hit all of our deadlines and our goals, um, but learn new processes, write down the processes, get all of these things in place um, so that no matter who is sitting in my seat or in their seat, um, any employee can do the job to be able to get the financials complete and clear. Um, so I just, I'm incredibly grateful and I just want to make sure that I publicly thank you. And I know Albert is here and Brooke's not with us today and Amber and Shentel, but thank you guys. I know it was a lot of work and I really appreciate it.
Then you have the next item?
I do. Um, oh, yes. Next is, um, just an update. I think Stacy is doing the update. Um, I, um, just curious. I know, I think the OCC Y got an update on the Behavioral Healthcare Center. Um, and so looking forward to the presentation. And that's all. I don't really have other questions with it at the time.
Okay. There's a lot of moving parts to this, a lot of information, so I'll get to the best I can. When we sat down and negotiated the contract, uh, it was forty-four million, four hundred thousand dollars. It's both sides negotiating. Um, Flinko had all their subcontractors on speed dial, so, uh, no one was happy at the end. So that tells me it was a very successful negotiation. The problem then is you bid out to those subcontractors over the next four months and there were supposed to be ten percent contingency in that number. And that's what we negotiated, which had been over four million dollars. After the bids came in, there was only fifty-nine thousand dollars left. So escalation costs eight up, nearly four million dollars. So those costs are real. Uh, escalation still continues today. All projects that haven't been bid yet are going to, uh, fall on those hard times. Um, I don't know when the end in sight to this escalation will be, but it's not happened yet. Uh, so that's a pretty tough, uh, hand to be dealt to try to build a forty-four million dollar project with, uh, little or no contingency, but we're, we're getting by. Um, there's been about twenty-one change orders asked for so far to date. Half of them have been approved, half of them have been denied. So the guaranteed price, uh, you can have change orders if there's under percent conditions. So it says, it stands today as at forty-five million, two sixty-one, seven forty-two. And about half a million of that was, uh, we're trying to recover that from an oil company. The DA's got that on their desk and hopefully we'll be successful in getting that money back, um, to put in our contingency fund. The CMAR method is something that's really helped this project, uh, because your contractor and your architect are working together before the project ever starts. Uh, where's Scott?
Where'd you go?
Okay, go ahead and put it up there if you can.
I think they're stuck.
I'll just continue while they're doing that. One thing that's different this time from the last time we built the project down the street. Uh, we've got over thirty people watching this project for the commissioners on a weekly, if not a daily basis. So we got a lot of people plugged in, making sure things are going right. We tracked over fifty failed tests on this project and we made them tear out all the concrete and all the, uh, cement block that did fail the tests and they had to replace it. So we're getting good quality in this project this time. And we're watching that stuff closely. Schedule wise, you know, we have to finish by December of twenty-twenty-six. Right now, we're on schedule. It's pretty tight though. We cannot afford a, uh, a bad, long winter. So pray for us, uh, to have a soft, mild winter.
As they're looking, um, for the presentation, and you may answer this question, um, but I'm curious about the, um, the equipment that's going into the facility, the, the beds, the, just kind of the layout. I did a tour of the OU New Behavioral Healthcare Center, which was amazing. Um, and I know there's a lot of, there's thought in building anything, right? But when you're building a mental health facility, you, there's some additional thoughts that you have to go through, um, with the way that things hang down from the ceiling and things like that and to people to help with suicide.
It all has to be anti-legature because you've got people in mental health crisis that may be looking at suicide and you, you can't let that happen. So this facility was designed with anti-legature across the board.
And who is partnering with us and helping make sure we, you know, are thinking through those and purchasing the right equipment or?
Well, HOK, um, which is our architect, they have a, a group on their team that's, uh, supposedly the experts in the country on this subject matter. And they made sure that this facility met those, uh, requirements. In addition to that, we just finished interviews for who's actually going to operate this center. And I was told the interviews went very successfully. There's a clear winner and they are truly experts. The people on the interview committee were all mental health experts. Uh, just selecting the mental health vendors. So when they get on board, which I hope will be between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we can start working with them to finish, uh, ordering the equipment that we need and also to double check to make sure that, uh, HOK got it designed correctly. So the design is up there on the screen. As you can see, this is a, a building model that, uh, the contractor actually built before bids went out. That's one of the, uh, advantages of a CMAR, CMAR system. Uh, right off the plans, working with the architect, he built this model on the computer before he ever started building it on the ground. So that helped probably eliminate hundreds of change orders that you'll never see. So wherever we end up on this project, we're going to be a way ahead of where we would have if we'd have done the old design bid build. Scott's driving through just different, um, views of that. He can go inside a room, he can go underneath the building just to make sure all the pieces are there. And then they use this model to compare with what they're building out there right now to make sure they're, they're getting every aspect in place. If you go out there now, all the foundations are in, the steel's being erected. We're real close to being done. They're putting, uh, siding on the building, trying to get it closed in so they can work all winter.
So is that two beds in one room? Is that what I'm?
Yes, that's what you're saying. There's different kinds of beds, um, throughout the facility depending what the needs are.
Have we identified the day-to-day operational funds, where those monies are going to come from to operate this facility once it's open?
I haven't. That's, uh, budget board's, uh, charge.
Has it been discussed since we've started the construction? Is it going to have to be operated day-to-day? Does that even came up with anyone? How to pay for the day-to-day operations?
Yeah, I think the commissioners have thought through it to a certain degree and they'll have to share with you what they've, uh...
I don't think there's an answer to that.
I don't think there's an answer either. I don't think it has been discussed.
But it was a nice pivot of you to throw it into budget board. I appreciate that.
Didn't work though. We have nothing to discuss, nor should, this should have been discussed.
It's not been assigned to me.
Set of plans. So you're opposed to the Medical Behavioral Care Center? I'm, I'm opposed to bankrupting the county with things that we can't afford. I think the day-to-day operations of anything and any business has to be discussed and we have to plan where those monies are going to come from, what our budget is. We have a set budget. We're a balanced budget county. As each one of you, I don't explain it to you. You all know that. So we're getting ready to open another jail in the medical facility. I understand the new jail's going to have six to seven hundred beds. I've gotten two answers, six and seven.
No, it's closer to four.
It's down to four? Well, the answer you gave me last time was six, then Miles gave me seven standing over there. So now it's four, but still four hundred beds. It's still a small county jail.
Yes, it's not intended, it's not intended to replace the.
I don't see the county jail being, uh, cheaper to run a smaller one than a larger one. I mean, we're, we're putting ourselves in a position, if we don't identify now what our cost is going to be the day-to-day operations of a new county jail, existing county jail, and a new mental health facility. I don't see, unless you think the citizens are going to raise property taxes.
Uh, proper, there's not enough money in your property tax to fund any of that. It has to be a sales tax. That's, that's for sure. Have you got any questions about the model or do you see anything else on it?
If there's no other questions, thank you, Stacy. Madam Clerk, number thirty-nine.
Yes, sir. That's just the normal transfer from salary to MNO. Move that, or make a motion to move the transfer over seventy thousand from salary to maintenance.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't have it. No, now I do. Thank you. Brilliant, young lady. And this item was requested by Mr. Wilkerson.
And this item was requested by Mr. Weperson. Cash fund appropriations to employee benefits.
Move approval?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same with item forty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Clayton?
Good morning. Number forty-two is a transfer of two hundred and sixty-five thousand from the courthouse flood C zero zero eight eight back to unallocated funds. And this will increase the new total amount, as Albert discussed, to six hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. The reason why we're asking for this transfer today is because we transferred two, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars out of unallocated funds when we had the courthouse flood in order to pay for KONE expenses to get our elevators up and running. Today, you approved an appropriation of over two point four million dollars in actual cash value. Insurance check that was deposited and appropriated to this line item. So now we can transfer that money back to the unallocated funds to allow for us to utilize it for other expenses.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is transfer funds for IT Dane.
Yes, good morning. This fifty-five thousand we were budgeted for with September supplementals to buy the three sixty-five licensing for the sheriff's reserves and bring everybody on the sheriff's office into the three sixty-five. It was funded or deposited into our maintenance and operations, but since these licenses are first-time buy, it's technically a capital expense. So we just need to move it over to capital so we stay budgeted correctly or balanced.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jessica, you want to explain this next item?
Yes, thank you. So a little history behind number forty-four is this week on Tuesday at Policy and Governance, we have been working hard on a long overdue records retention policy. And part of that policy, the PNG committee members decided that it would be best in order to utilize the Oklahoma County Technology, Information Technology Council that used to be in place in two thousand and thirteen in order to oversee, provide training, oversight of these record retention and disposal of records. They also approved a resolution to amend the already existing resolution that was approved in two thousand and thirteen in order to make Dane our, in there, it doesn't list his name, it just says the Director of Information Technology, the Chairman, but an ex officio adu member, so he would not have the ability to vote. And so what we are asking for today is that we would really like to get this up and running again since there hasn't been any movement on it since two thousand and thirteen, just for multiple reasons. Not only for the records retention policy that we know is so important, but also opportunities for all of the elected officials to be able to talk about the needs right now that we have for our data center. So that way we can take care of that as well as new phone systems, which we're looking at. And then other policies related to technology that we would like all of the elected officials to be able to weigh in on. And so what we're asking for you today is just to appoint your primary and secondary appointees so that way we can have that established so that when we put this across B OCC on December first in order to get this back up and running, they can then meet as soon as possible, probably after the, in the new year in order to, to start making these decisions. And when we approve the policy, also hopefully on December first, we will have that council in place in order to educate all of the elected officials departments around what records retention means for the county, for those that don't already have record retention policies such as the clerk here, as well as Rick Warren, who has the state statutes and the treasurer. But the other departments will need that direction and oversight and really appreciate Jim Anderson and Cody and their feedback and all of that. And Cassie provided me that resolution this morning. So if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll designate Brandy Mertens as primary and Katie Arada as the backup alternate. Do you have to have those names today?
We need the names today.
My primary will be Chuck Jolly. And I think Mr. Watson will be my backup.
Thank you.
I apologize. If we could go back for just a moment because I do need to make sure that I have these correct. If you could, Commissioner Mon, if you could please say the second name again.
Katie Arada.
And Mr. Freeman, you said yours for who?
Chuck, Chuck Jolly.
J O L L E Y.
And who was your alternate?
My second, my backup. I'll get that name to you in just a second.
And our office is Walter as the primary and Matthew as our alternate. And I appreciate it. I know you and Carrie have had a lot of really good conversations. I'm very passionate about processes as well and I'm looking forward to it. We have our mission control task force that Carrie has been leading and I think it will complement each other really, really well. So, thank you.
District one.
Joe Lau and John Pettis.
Rick Buchanan and Jennifer Bowen.
Thank you.
I appreciate Cassie recording these. Thank you, Cassie.
Sheriff's office, its primary is going to be David Basden, B A I S D E N. And his alternate is Tim Melton, E M L T O N.
Three and yes, assessor. Mike Morrison and Brian Hutchins.
Best for last. Kimberly Zoudi, Z U H D I, will be primary. Paul Foster will be secondary.
I can't remember it. I'll get back to you.
Okay. No alternate for the treasurer at this time.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Is there a motion?
I appreciate your time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jessica.
Mr. Warren? Get your vote, please, sir. Thank you.
Any citizens to speak? Seeing none, board comments, assessor.
Happy Thanksgiving. Have a safe one and we've got a lot to be thankful for.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Treasurer?
None.
None. Happy Thanksgiving and happy birthday to Brian Mon, Mike Sullivan and Rick Warren.
Thank you.
That's my son, Rick Warren. They're all born on November the twenty-second, all three of them.
Okay. Any new business? Is there a motion to adjourn? So move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.